Well, hello everyone. And welcome to tonight's meeting. May I call the meeting of the Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education to order on December 19th, 2024 in compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act: Adequate Notice that This Meeting Has Been Provided as specified in the Act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in newspaper and on the district website on January 17th, 2024. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building, in the schools, and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk and transmitted to other newspapers on November 19th, 2024. These include the Daily Record, Star Ledger, Parsippany Focus, Tap into Parsippany, Parsippany Patch, and the district website. This regular public board meeting is being video recorded as per bylaw 0168. The recordings of these meetings will be available on our district website and our video-on-the-go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. May we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Abraham?
Here.
Mr. Barrios?
Here.
Mrs. Cogan?
Here.
Mrs. Mayer?
Here.
Mr. Rayo?
Here.
Mrs. Chappell?
Here.
Dr. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Goldruhr? Stapleton? And Mr. Choppa?
Here.
May we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have our student reports this evening. Who would like to start?
Good evening. I'm Emma Gonzalez from Parsippany High School, and I'm so excited to share this week's past events with you. First, the freshman class had an amazing idea to sell $5 pictures of Santa, which was Mr. Smith, and a crumble cookie. It was an amazing success and a huge turnout of kids. Hopefully, we can have the same turnout for future events. Another great fundraiser is a Spanish honor society fundraiser where we are collecting toy donations from homerooms. The homeroom with the most toys will win a bagel party. We plan to give these toy donations out to children that are less fortunate. For our music students, the last week has been a complete success. Last Wednesday, we had our winter concert for our supportive parents, and Thursday morning, we had our school concert for any teachers that wanted to experience the festivity with their students. Within our Wednesday concert, the Tri-M Honor Society had their induction ceremony as well. We inducted three new students. On Saturday, a handful of band students got to see Back to the Future on Broadway. It was a fun event and eventful experience for so many students, and they are extremely grateful for this opportunity. This Tuesday, upperclassmen, band, and choir students got to meet with the Central Middle School eighth graders to talk about the music curriculum within Parsippany and perform a few pieces to encourage students to join. It was a successful outing, and we cannot wait to have our eighth graders join our musical programs. On Wednesday night, the Indian Cultural Club hosted a Diwali dinner full of games, food, and performances for PHS students and parents to enjoy. It was a huge success. This Monday, our student council held their annual Deck the Halls event where each hallway is decorated by either a grade level or the staff. This year, our PHS staff went all out with the Polar Express themed hallway that has been the talk of our school. Our key club is preparing for our winter workshop. We plan to do an escape room and presentation on how students can better manage their time management with their extracurriculars, mass amounts of schoolwork, and their social life as well. We hope that it will be a big success for our students. We also have a student running for the state board of key club on January 8th, so we cannot wait to support her through her election. Our school musical, Guys and Dolls, is holding their auditions this week. Good luck to all of our actors and actresses preparing for their tryouts. Hosa is having a hot chocolate fundraiser where they have been selling hot chocolate after school to raise money for their club. And today, our French honor society took a trip into New York. Our school is so grateful for the opportunities we have outside the school to learn about different cultures and different experiences. For our sports, all of our winter sports have finished their tryouts and have begun their winter games. Our school is so happy and proud of our team members, and we are excited to see where our school teams will take us. We do, as a representative, our school has been talking a lot about our school day on Monday, so we do ask that you take it into consideration. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Who is the young lady up for the key club?
Zania.
Okay.
Zania, I'm not sure of her last name.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening all. I hope you all are doing very well. Let's get started with this month's Viking report, starting off with student council updates. The student council is gearing up for an exciting winter spirit week, starting December 16th, culminating in a winter pep rally on December 23rd during the second half of the half-day. Events such as our beloved pep rallies aim to boost school spirit and community engagement. Additionally, plans are underway for our upcoming event, Hill Senior Standouts, which is an event hosted by seniors for the seniors that recognizes them by giving out class-related awards. For example, most athletic did the most for PHHS, most likely to be 15 minutes late, 15 minutes early, et cetera. Student council will also be attending the NJ SAC Winter Conference on January 8th, and we are proud to say that a student council member from our board will be running for a state position. We wish him or her the best of luck. Moving on to PHS events and updates, here are some highlights from events and initiatives happening throughout PHHS. Fast reminder, senior families are encouraged to begin the fast application process if they haven't already. Completing this form is a graduation requirement for the class of 2025. Senior cap and gown orders, a reminder to order graduation caps and gowns before February 1st, 2025, to avoid a late fee. Senior internship program expansion, PHHS is seeking businesses in Morris County to partner with us for our senior internship program, which runs from May 12th to June 19th. Interested parties can reach out for more details. Scholarship seminars will be held during lunch on December 16th and 17th to assist students in exploring financial aid opportunities. The class of 2025 is hosting a project grad fundraiser with Chipotle on Tuesday, January 7th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. 25% of event sales get donated to the class of 2025 for Project Graduation. The Chipotle they have partnered with is located on 1711 State Route 10, Morris Plains, 07950. All right, moving on to PHS athletic updates. As we transition to winter sports, here are some highlights. A reminder about the PHS athletics account at Par Hills Athletics has been launched to keep everyone updated on Viking sports achievements and events. Fall athletic awards, several PHHS athletics athletes have been recognized for their exceptional performances, with all county in honorable mentions for their fall sports. Winter sports teams begin their season this week. We wish them all the best. The following are the upcoming Viking games. Boys basketball will face Lenape Valley at 4:00 PM on December 13th. Boys and girls swimming will go against Mendham at Morristown at 4:30 PM on December 16th. Boys and girls swimming will verse PHS at Morristown at 4:30 PM on December 19th. Hockey will play against Newton at Menon Arena at 6:15 PM on December 19th. Boys basketball will verse Pope John at 7:00 PM on December 19th. That concludes this month's PHS report. Thank you and have a joyous holiday season.
Thank you. Do any board members have questions? No? Tanish, Emma, thank you. Have a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for everything.
We are going to have a presentation by the school auditor. It's Mr. John Farina from PKF O'Connor Davies, and he will present the 2024 audit report.
Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is John Farina. I was the director on the audit for PKF O'Connor Davies for the June 30th, 2024 audit. The audit is complete and was finalized as of today, ahead of the state's January 1st and January 15th statutory deadlines. Just want to start off by thanking Robin, Colleen, Nick, and the entire administration staff for really all of their assistance in completing the audit. We spent a great deal of time on the audit. We spend hundreds of hours between us working on the audit, and we can't get it done without reciprocal commitment from the administration. So really, a lot of effort goes into it on all sides, and we really appreciate the effort we get. You'll notice in the audit, the district earned the Certificate of Excellence from ASBO International for the June 30th, '23 audit, which is included in the June 24 report. And the district is in the process of applying for the next year's Certificate of Excellence. Just some of the audit highlights, the most important part of the audit is the auditor's opinion. Once again, this year, the district earned an unmodified opinion, which is the highest opinion we could give. We give you an idea of what we do. We come in, we spend a lot of times evaluating and testing internal controls, which means there are safeguards in place for your receipt processes, your disbursement purchasing processes. And I'm happy to say that there was nothing that we found that rose to a level of requiring a recommendation in the audit. As part of our audit, we also do a single audit due to the level of federal and the state spending, which means we have to look at specific grants and test compliance requirements with specific grants. This year, we tested the National School Lunch Program and the ACERS grant on the federal side, and there were no instances of noncompliance. And on the state side, we tested the TPAF FICA reimbursements, and once again, no instances of noncompliance. So we spent a little more time in detail in finance committee before this, so that was just a brief overview. So really, good job by the district, and I can answer any questions.
Do any board members have any questions for John? Mr. Ray?
First, I'd like to thank Robin and your staff for a great job, well done, and as always, every year that you have a great job and well done. One of the questions we talked about is cybersecurity.
Okay.
And you did answer it, and we did note that there's, that some school districts have had some problems with cybersecurity, but also, but we are being proactive in that way, and there's some training involved. People are taking training to hopefully avoid cybersecurity incidents which are occurring more and more often. And let's see, what else? Michelle, I think you might have had a comment as well.
Yeah, I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Again, thank you to the staff. I mean, it was an amazing effort. I know it was a very heavy lift given the changes in personnel we had this year, so thank you very much. And thank you. We had a very thorough report. I love looking at financial statements as an accountant. And it was very interesting to look through this. Again, as I mentioned in the room before, every question I had written down, you had answered later through the document, through the different commentary that was provided, so it was very thorough. I do want to call attention to just one thing that you mentioned in passing to everybody. So you had mentioned around the Certificate of Excellence in financial reporting.
Yes.
That is something that we actually have won seven years in a row. So thank you again for the recognition for the upcoming year, looking forward to hearing what they have to say about it. But it is quite an accomplishment to, you know, to recognize that we have performed so strongly in those ways. The other thing I was going to highlight is that you, again, mentioned in passing, but I think it is worth just reinforcing, a big part of the audit that you do is around the control framework around the way we do things. That ensures that as transactions are happening, there are the appropriate level of controls to ensure that there is nothing getting recorded incorrectly by the wrong person, and there's no mischief going on in how things are happening. So thank you for highlighting that and the work you do in that space, too.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Allison?
I ask this every year, but I just want to make sure, since you look at a bunch of different districts, if there's anything that other districts are doing to either increase revenue or decrease expenses that you have seen that we are not doing, you would bring that up at some point to us, correct?
Yes, we would bring it up, but we don't see anything, any missed opportunities or anything, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrios?
I just also want to thank Robin and her team. Once again, you do not disappoint. You guys are rock stars, especially with some of the abuse you took this year. I want to thank you, and I appreciate your, you know, keeping us afloat, and to get another recognition would be a great thing. So I want to thank you personally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? John, would you mind sticking around for a few more minutes? Because I'm going to open up a public comment section right now for any comments from the public specifically on the audit report. So if any members of the public would like to come up and ask a question, it'll be addressed to the chair, not to John. Please feel free to do so, sign in at the table, and you're free to answer questions about the audit. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public portion. John, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, thank you again.
Thank you, everybody.
And Robin and staff, thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there any correspondence coming for the board? Thank you. Well, I was hoping that Mrs. Goldruhr would be here tonight, but she's still under the weather, and this would have been her last meeting. So I wanted to just thank her for her service to the board over the last several years and wish her well. I don't know what her future holds in terms of politics, but certainly, you know, her time with the board is much appreciated. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Susie? Thank you. So committee reports, let's see, we'll start to my left, so stage right, no, stage left. Communications, Mr. Rayo?
Yes. The communications committee met on November 19th. Mr. Choppa was chair for Mrs. Abraham. It was also attended by Mr. Barrios, Mrs. Cogan, and myself, and Mrs. Benos. We prepared a press release during that meeting, which we then edited and submitted out to press, which was sent out on November 22nd, and it was picked up to some extent, but not as, probably not to all the newspapers, the local newspapers. So, but basically, it was about the pilot programs and some of the things. It was to give an update and provide some transparency on the negotiations between the township and the Board of Education. So, that went up.
Thank you. Any questions for Jack? Okay. Judy, any report, liaison, or committee?
I do have...
I'm sorry.
Yep. Do you have a liaison, Jack?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, yeah, please.
I'd like to just acknowledge Mr. Nick Branzino is in the audience. He is the president of the PAL, and he was appointed two months ago, I believe. And I went to the last PAL meeting, which was two weeks ago, and one of the highlights was the receipt of a $5,000 grant, the PAL had a $5,000 grant received from the Kiwanis Club, and it was for the purchase of a new scoreboard. And since Mr. Branzino became the new president, there is a new energy at the PAL which hasn't been there in a while. I've been the liaison for now for two years, and there is a new energy, changes are going up, and if you look on the Facebook page for the PAL, there is a new, there was a new display that was being prepared when we were there. It's honoring the Parsippany PAL Board of Directors. But there are a lot of new programs, and then in future meetings, there'll be additional, we'll be sharing additional programs that are going on, and I welcome everyone to check out their social media.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. And before we move on, remiss, I'd like to acknowledge two council members. Council Vice President Nagley is here, and Council Member McGrath is here, so thanks for attending our meeting. Judy?
Thank you. I was going to report out on the delegate assembly meeting that Mrs. Cogan and I both attended virtually. There were a few resolutions that were passed. I'll go over them pretty quick, okay? The first one had to do with submitting the report earlier so that it can be brought, the resolutions can be brought back to the boards to review and give their opinion whether they're going to favor it or not, so when the delegate goes to the meeting, they can vote knowing what their board wanted. The next one was, let's see, oh, electronic posting of board meetings, because a lot of newspapers are not going to be printing anymore, and they said that you can, you know, if you can do it still with your papers, fine. If not, you can do both, or you can do with the computer. There was going to be something about putting up a central place that would have meetings, I believe. So they were talking about that. Let's see, oh, there was something in our, about the, if students are training for the military and they have to be out of school, they were talking about that these should be excused absences and they can extend, and I think one of our policies that I read had something in there about civic duties, that there is an excused amount of time they can be out, so that was another one. Pilot agreements was an interesting one. This was asked, this was put in by Verona, and I'll read you the wording because it's pretty good. The New Jersey School Board believes that the municipality should be required to include the Board of Education in the consideration and development of any pilot, of any payment in lieu of taxes agreement that has the potential to increase student enrollment. The Board of Education should be a member of the Municipal Negotiation Committee with equal rights and decision-making authority to provide input and receive appropriate portion of community benefits. So that was another one that was passed. I'm just gonna, I mean, you can probably just pick these up if you want to go delegate assembly, you can get them. Naming of schools, that was not passed. They were saying that, you know, if schools want to rename their school because it's bearing the name of something in history that's not popular, they can do that. It doesn't have to be come from the state. It's pretty much up to the different districts to do that. Curriculum and diversity, you know, we have to have different, and again, we are already on that, having different curricula that address certain minorities in our district. These are all upside down. And that's basically it. Like I said, you can just pull up the delegate assembly, and you can read them all in detail. That's the delegate assembly. Can I report out on that visit today to Brooklawn, or do you want me to wait?
I think Madam Attorney could add some context to the point you made about posting of notices.
So the board's aware, today, the House and the Senate both passed the electronic posting. It's sitting on Governor Murphy's desk. It takes us through March 1 of 2025. We'll see what happens after that.
Thank you.
Today, Mrs. Cogan and I were at Brooklawn this morning, the Optimum Hispanic Heritage Essay Writing Contest. There were thousands of entries from across the country, and our student in eighth grade was the grand prize winner. Her essay is at your seats. Her name is Agostina, oh, glasses, where are you? Agostina Vinnels, I'm not pronouncing her name correctly, but it was a lovely ceremony. The mayor was there, he read a proclamation. The Optimum people were there, they presented her with a check for $3,000. Her teacher that kind of guided her and helped her was there. The principal was there. It was just a lovely time for this girl. She was, she was touched by the amount of people that came, I believe, and it made, it made me feel proud to be a board member because this is what gives us the best feeling when our kids are doing things that are just so incredible, and our staff is helping them. I mean, this is what it's about, so I was really proud to be there and to be considered a board member. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions to Judy? No?
Talking too much.
Mrs. Cogan?
The ad hoc committee for the superintendent search met on Monday. Mr. Rayo, President Choppa, Mrs. Mayer, Mrs. Decker, and Dr. Ricker and I reviewed and updated an RFP to go out for consultants. We basically asked for a list of their services for the search and prices for each of the services, so that when we get the RFPs back, we can see what they will offer, we will see how much each of those services will cost. There is a, it has to be posted for 20 days before we open the RFPs, so it'll probably be mid-January before those are back. There is a grid or matrix for what was requested in the RFP, so that will hopefully help narrow down the firms that the entire board will then interview. Based on some of the recent superintendent searches that we saw, we are hopeful that a July 1st start date is still possible, but it definitely will take a concerted effort on all of the nonconflicted members' parts to make sure that we meet the timelines in order to make that happen. So that was the ad hoc committee. And then, Mrs. Mayer and I attended the school board's legislative meeting last Saturday. I did put the summary of that meeting in the board drive, so you can all go through that. Most of the discussion was on the potential school funding, changing of the school funding formula, student cell phone use, and the public notice requirements that we already talked about. There are lots of links in that summary so that you can get a little more detail. There are several public forums for the Department of Education to hear from local schools about their issues with the current funding formulas and our theoretical requests for the updated, the funding formula, so I would like to suggest that we prepare something to either be written and sent to them or for somebody to attend one of those sessions so that they do hear from local boards that, you know, the school funding formula definitely needs addressed and improved so that we can function.
Thank you, Allison. And you had said that they would accept a letter or an email to the effect?
Yes.
Jack, would you mind working with Allison to draft such a letter?
Yep.
And perhaps circulate it to the finance committee for review? I think there's a deadline of January 9th?
The deadlines are all listed in the attended, the most local forum is January 9th, but I think there's things after that.
Okay. Yeah, because I think the point is that New Jersey school boards does a great job lobbying for certain things, but I think the legislature may be impacted if a number of local school boards representing thousands of voters also weighed in on the issues with the school funding formula?
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Wendy, any committee liaison?
I have none.
Okay, thank you very much. Michelle, personnel?
Thank you. I have two. So on December 10th, the Human Resource and Labor Relations Committee met. It was myself, Judy Mayer, Susie Goldruhr, and Todd Ricker who attended. There were a number of confidential personnel matters that we discussed. There are three new job descriptions, I'm sorry, two new job descriptions and one revised job descriptions in the bulletin tonight for approval that we discussed there, and there are two significant roles, one supervisor of buildings and grounds, as well as the Hills Assistant Principal and Athletic Director that are still open. We're getting closer, it's nearly there, so at our next meeting, we expect to have some more information to share on both. And then my second one is the Educational Services Commission of Morris County, one of my favorite meetings to go to. It was a, it was a good session. There wasn't a lot covered. They were talking about, if you recall, they were talking about purchasing the building that they have been residing in for quite some time. They're still in the process, just like anybody trying to purchase a piece of real estate. There is quite a bit... There is quite a bit of rigmarole that they have to go through, so they expect to hopefully be done with that by the end of January. But, that's it.
Any questions? So, Michelle, you've uttered two things I've never heard uttered at a board table. One, you know, I enjoy poring through audit reports in detail. I've never heard anyone really say that and that they enjoy attending the ESC meeting. So, thank you for both of those. You're a lot of fun at a cocktail party, I'm sure.
I'm sure.
Sheethol, do you have any, any, no? Okay. Tim, any report?
Yeah, policy did not meet, but the items for review are in the bulletin. Looks like they, I thought they were second reads, but they're first reads. But, they were having reviewed them, they looked like there was just word changes, but again, we did not meet this, this session here.
Any questions on the policies that are in the bulletin? All right, seeing none. We are up to approval of the minutes for regular and executive minutes of November, Judy, now I've put on my glasses, November 14th, 2024, and executive and special meeting minutes of December 5th, 2024. May I have a motion to approve the meeting? Wendy, Judy seconded. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Need to abstain from the special meeting, the public session of the special meeting on the 5th. Yes to everything else.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Raye?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes. Dr. Sutter, Superintendent's Bulletin Number 9, if you please.
Thank you, President Chaffo. Good evening, everyone. Our interim Business Administrator and I attended our mid-year budget review meeting on Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, along with all the other districts in Morris County. Ms. Tedesco was called on to answer questions as she is the resident expert concerning building a sustainable budget. So, nice work, Robin. Please tune in to view our Beyond the Bell podcast. With the help of Brian Satch, we are going strong with our podcast initiative. Good news from Brook Lawn, thousands of students across the country entered Optimum and Univision's Annual Hispanic Heritage Essay Writing Contest and Brook Lawn's own Augustina Vinalis was chosen as the grand prize middle school winner, as was mentioned earlier. She was honored at Brook Lawn this morning by Optimum Univision as well as by the BOE members and Mayor Barberio. Congratulations, Augustina. I was unable to go there. We had another commitment for, I want to mention Dr. Mulrooney, his mother's passing and our condolences go out to Dr. Mulrooney. Holiday concert season, I would like to thank Allison Carvana, our coordinating supervisor of K-12 Visual and Performing Arts, as well as our music teaching staff for the wonderful holiday concerts they created and directed at our elementary, middle, and high schools. Our students sounded wonderful. Nicely done. In closing, I would like to thank Mrs. Goldrue for her many years of service to the BOE and for the support she has shown me over the years. I wish her continued success, health, and happiness. And finally, I would like to wish everyone a happy, healthy, and pleasant holiday season and new year. See you all in 2025. Tonight, for your approval, we have Superintendent Bulletin Items 1 through 51 with addendum and reading items 52 through 65.
Thank you, Dr. Sutter. Any questions for Dr. Sutter? Seeing none. Mrs. Tedesco, would you care to comment on the Secretary's report?
Sure. Hi, everyone. On tonight's Secretary's Report, we have our regular business motions, including the approval of the June 30th, 2024 audit. Does anybody have any questions? Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, Robin. Any new business to come before the board? Oh, Miss, Mrs., Dr. Wright, sorry.
No problem. I just wanted to report that, so, in our board goals set for the coming, this ongoing year, one of the things we had said was our, had a goal of achieving board certification by 2026. I had reached out to Charlene Peterson, our NJ SBA Field Rep, Field Services Rep on a different matter and asked her something about it. It was like, while I, while I have you, can you comment on this? And she, A, gave me some information that I will share by email to, or I'll share it to Joni about the process for board certification, but also she shared that, so, if you recall, one of the requirements is 16 credits of training over a four-year period. If we look back to March 2022, we have 6.5 already. So, we're actually like, if we can, in, they carry over to a four-year period. So, our original board goal was to achieve certification by October 2026, but if we ultimately set up that calendar aiming to be completed by March 2026, we'll be able to count that 6.5, which is, you know, it's over a third of our, of our total training credits.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And thanks to the reminder, too, because we did have a goal to get some statements from, from our committees before this term ended, but we'll have to punt that to, to next year and I think we'll take up the, the board certification. You had that as a list? Okay, thank you. Yep. Let's see, no, any other new business? No. Okay, here are you, the public. At this time, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book, at the lectern and state your name for the record and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It will be helpful if you would like to address the board to please come up now and sign the book so that you are ready when the first speaker is finished. As a reminder, we are video recording this meeting. If you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask you not to provide your home address, but rather give only the name of the municipality in which you live. If you are a parent wishing to discuss a specific student matter to your, regarding your child during this portion of the meeting, you may request the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matter to the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in their comments and refer to by law 168 for further information regarding the videotaping of our meetings. Yes, please, Mr. Matt.
Good evening, everyone. Matt DeVito, Parsippany resident. I just want to wish Dr. Sutter, President Chaffo, members of the board, happy holidays and to all your families and also to all of our staff, teachers, staff, and everyone, happy, happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Good evening, everybody. How are you? My name is Nicholas Bronzino. I'm truly here to introduce myself as the new Executive Director of Parsippany PAL. It's been a transition for me from the board. I was on the board for two and a half years as the Vice President. Our newest Executive Director did step down and he asked me to transition into the role. I am here to say thank you to Jack for all of the help. I'm here to say thank you to Councilman Neglia for the help on the introduction. I have met a couple of you already via email and I just wanted to let you know that my message is simple, to get back involved in the community. A lot of the kids through, including my daughter, I live in town, but a lot of the kids just come through the building that are in the school district and I really want to invest and spread the message that we are a community center and really support the town. And just a quick side note, I've already had conversations with Allison actually today in regards to having both high schools combine together and come in to paint a mural in my building. So, true partnership. I'm just looking for a true partnership and any way I can support anything I'm here to do. So, I will sure shake hands after the meeting and hand out some business cards, but if anybody ever needs anything from me, please don't hesitate to reach out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy the holiday. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Happy holidays. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, we'll close the public session. We are at a roll call vote for Superintendent's Bulletin Number 9, Items 1 through 51 with Addendums 52 to 65 and readings. May I have a motion, please? Sheethol, second. Judy, roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
No to number 13, yes to everything else.
Mr. Raye?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
I have to recuse on the bill list 5408, is that's a reimbursement to myself. I am a yes to everything else. So, just before we adjourn, I just like to take a minute to thank everyone. As my term as President of the Board of Education ends, I am filled with deep, a deep sense of gratitude and pride for the work that we've accomplished together. Serving this district and our incredible community has been one of the most rewarding and challenging experiences of my life. Over the years, I have witnessed firsthand the dedication, resilience, and passion of our educators, staff, students, families, and Board of Education members. Together, we have navigated challenges, celebrated achievements, and remain steadfast in our commitment to provide the best possible education for every student. None of this would have been possible without the collaborative efforts of our board members, the administration, and the unwavering support of the community. As I step away from this role, I am confident that our district is in capable hands. The work of the Board of Education is never done and I know that my successor will continue to advocate for our students and uphold the values that make this district exceptional. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to each of you who have supported me during this journey. Your constructive feedback, encouragement, and trust have meant the world to me. Just a, just a couple of shout-outs to Dr. Sutter. It's been a pleasure working with you this past year. You are a great guy, an exceptional, an exceptional superintendent and I'm proud to call you a friend, so, thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Andy. I wanted to say the same to you. It was a real pleasure working with you this year and you've supported me for the last nine years, along with all the other board members. Parsippany really is a great place and under your leadership, I really enjoyed my time. Thank you.
Thank you. And certainly to your staff and I, you know, I hate saying names because you always miss one, but certainly to Ms. Tedesco, Dr. Mulrooney, Mr. Ricker, and especially to Joni, who I call JB. It was a tough start to the year, Joni, but I think we came through very strong and we ended stronger. So, thank you for everything you do. You know, board members come and go and superintendents come and go and administrators come and go, but you're this bright light that keeps shining on everything, so thank you for that. I appreciate it. That's it. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn. Judy? Oh, oh, no? Oh, that's right, we do have to go. My apologies. Yeah, I was like, gonna get out of here. We have to go into executive session for the, for a hip matter and will there be action? Yeah, there will, there will be action after that, after that closed session. So, motion to go into closed session. Michelle, you've had too many. Sheethol?
You're limited.
So, we will, we will, actually, our closed session doesn't begin until 8:00, so we have some time.
Yeah. I must be here.
Yeah, oh, are they here? They are here? Okay, we do, okay. Thanks, JB. The shining light.
Yes.
Everyone's a yes.
Right. Going in. Nice work, Mr. Chaffo.
One last thing to do. Sorry. You okay? Can I talk to you? No, you won't. Actually, I know you felt like.
She'll go better. You did not.
Don't worry. How you feeling? Yep.
Okay, and motion to go into open session. Michelle, thank you. Jack second. All in favor? Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you, everyone, for participating in the discussion a few minutes ago. I'm going to read item number 66. Hip hearing, D-18 PHHS 8 affirmed, resolved in accordance with NJSA 18A:37-15. And following a hearing on the merits, the Board of Education hereby affirms the administration's hip determination for case D-18 PHHS 8 on December 19th, 2024, as it pertains to student number 34711 pursuant to board policy and applicable law, and be it further resolved that the Board Secretary is hereby directed to provide written notification to the parents of the board's decision. Robin, roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Kogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Raye?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?[1766.32]